John, and the question is a very straight call. It's why are you running for this district office? And what do you hope to achieve?
I ran in 2015 because I felt that I had the experience as an attorney and as a longtime community activist to serve. This time I ran because I really do feel like our current city councils failed us. They fought very hard against instant runoff voting, which voters overwhelmingly supported in 2008. I volunteered for that then, and they overwhelmingly went against it in 2018. The city overwhelmingly voted for it in 2018 as well. And I'll give Worth credit, he was actually against the waste, but overall, the city council did fail us in wasting $40,000 of taxpayer money on a false misleading of failed campaign against instant runoff voting. And to boot, they are continuing to waste taxpayer money fighting the lawsuit that's currently pending. But the number one reason that I had to run this time was because the city council we elect this year isn't going to affect the city council in the city for the next four years only. It's going to affect it for the next 14 years. The city council we elect this year is going to redraw districts in 2022 before the 2023 election, and I want to make sure that the city council that we elect supports 13 single-member districts, eliminating the super districts that favor wealthy incumbents and wealthy candidates in general. And I also want to make sure that we get rid of the costly runoffs. The fiscal note on the IRB issued initiative claimed that it would save taxpayers $1 million every four years. Now, that number's a little questionable, only because it depends on how many runoffs there are in a given year. But regardless, runoffs or low turnout favor wealthy candidates who can spend the money in the runoff and give us a representative that doesn't really represent the district. So the redistricting is really the number one. And again, I also think that I bring a very large amount of experience to the city council in that I'm an attorney, I'm a business owner, and I've been a longtime community activist since 2004. I didn't just wake up one day and decide to run for office, and I didn't buy my way to the seat. I'm not trying to buy my way to the seat. I've actually, I've got to fight for votes. But I do think as a councilman, I will represent the whole district and hope that I can show that come October 3rd.
Worth, same question for you.
Yes, my name's Worth Morgan. I currently serve on the Memphis City Council now, representing District 5. And I think we have some major issues facing us in Memphis, some honesty, got real battles to fight, and we need serious people in those positions working on those issues. We talk about high poverty, low income, poor education, high crime. And as far as city government goes, I think the two places that we can be most effective in addressing those four major issues we're facing, they're all interconnected. If one goes up and has the ability to bring all up, if one goes down and has the ability to drag all down. But when it comes to crime and economic development, I believe those are the two most important issues facing the city government that we can have an effect on today, tomorrow, and into the future that can create a better community for Memphis to live in. Ultimately, what we're trying to create is a more desirable city for people to live. We want them to have opportunities to work, opportunities to raise their family and live fulfilling lives. And the best we can do as city government is try to provide those opportunities. I'm very proud of the work we've done over the last four years. I've taken the tours, I've been with the homeowners association meetings. I really, I think, I dug into this job at full speed. I absorb as much as I can, and I'm proud of the work we've done over the last four years. Sometimes I do it as a leader, and you have to write the legislation yourself. Sometimes you do it as a part of a team, and you work with the administration. But I would actually be the first to say, I don't agree with every decision the council's made over the last four years. I certainly haven't won every vote in terms of council votes that we've had, but I don't think that should detract from where we are in the city and the progress we've made, both as a city as a whole and the city government and its functions.
Gotcha. I should have mentioned earlier, I'll mention it now, that each time we ask a question, it's for both of you to have a shot at answering. If you choose not to answer, that's your choice, but we, every question is that overall we answer. First one, you just mentioned crime and economic development, so I want to kind of delve into crime real quickly. As you well know, both of you, it's been a major issue for this city for quite a while, and particularly violent crime. And while our murder rate this year is lower, is tracking to be lower than it was in the record year 2016, we're still on track for more than 200 homicides in Memphis for this year, and violent crime remains certainly high in the city. What efforts, what things would you do to go for your district, as well as part of a larger body of city council, to try and combat violent crime and try and turn that number around? I'll start with you.
We've done a lot, and there are a lot more ideas that I'd like to pursue. First is to drive to at least 2,300 officers, and then we can reevaluate from there. And how that affects homicide, how that affects burglaries, how that affects crime prevention, is that we have a difficult time covering all of our shifts right now on patrol. We use overtime to fill it, but it's difficult. And then we don't have the bodies, we don't have the people in place, the officers in place, to then promote to that next level, because we can't take away from patrol. So that leaves, we have a domestic violence unit that has 21 detectives in it, and they handled 17,000 cases in 2018. We have, yeah, that's cases, not calls. We have a homicide unit that is working far more than the national average in terms of what's recommended. We have the general investigators bureau that has more on their desk than they can handle. If your home is broken into, if your car is broken into, that's who you call in the precinct, and they work the case. And what's important to have the right amount of manpower there is because most people that are doing these crimes, it's not their first time, or maybe it's not the only time they do it. They might break into one, two, three, 10 cars, but if you're able to capture them, or if you're able to arrest them after that second or third break-in, you can prevent situations four through 10. And same thing with homicide and violent assaults and gang activities as well. So that's the first thing. We've made a lot of efforts in police recruitment. I think we've had some hurdles in the way, and I would like to see the council get past that. We can do a better job in the future, and what we're working on now is lateral transfers for police officers that have qualified experience at other departments, and that we can pay them a signing bonus to come over to the NPD. That can help boost our numbers right away. We're working on the details and the funding for that at the moment. I'd be excited to see what we can continue to do in the communities. Camera technology has been a big innovation over the last four years with SkyCops and neighborhood cameras, and the grants that we've been giving to neighborhood watches to buy those cameras. And then also the Signal program that we put in place four years ago, because we recognize it shouldn't be just the wealthiest neighborhoods that can afford cameras have them and have them monitored by the city, but we wanted to make sure that those who are affected the most by crime, that have the most Part One violent crimes in their neighborhoods could also benefit from that technology. And that's where we were having 70 Sentinel cameras being placed every year within the city, and that's still an ongoing program. But the technology's changing year over year. Like TVs, the technology's getting better and the price is dramatically dropping, and so that's going to be a constant, a constant conversation with our tech people, with neighborhoods about what's best suited for them. These are just some of the things. There's a lot going on. We could spend an entire hour conversation, I think, on crime initiatives, but the first and most important thing is we've got to drive to 2,300 officers and reevaluate from there.
John?
Definitely. I believe we used to have more than 2,300 officers, and I don't think either of us will disagree on needing to hire more officers. And I hate that that's the answer, because the real answer is that if we could address the poverty issue, the crime issue would be much less. That being said, we already spend over half of our city's budget on public safety, and our hands are tied on ways to collect revenue. Now, hopefully, we'll get to talk about ways to save money later, but we can't solve the poverty problem from the local level besides investing in education and doing other things. But because of that, crime is going to continue to be a problem, and I do think hiring more officers is an answer. I also think making sure our officers properly use their time, properly focusing officer time in the right area is another way to save resources and make sure that our officers are focused on violent crime. One example that's perfect is, I live in a working-class neighborhood, and frequently there will be packs of stray dogs running around. Now, I'm endorsed by the pet lovers, and I'm all about dogs and cats. That being said, when somebody calls the police because a pack of stray dogs are out, the first responders are the ones that show up first. Our animal control unfortunately takes a long time to get to the scene frequently, and so we'll have officers wasting city time and resources looking at a pack of stray dogs that they can't even do anything about. So at the end of the day, they sit there, wasting their own time, and feel bad for them for having to even be standing there, waiting for animal patrol to get there. And my solution to that, and by the way, I have a very in-depth platform. I give a lot of policies. A lot of candidates you see running for office, and I'm not targeting my opponent here, I'm targeting a lot of campaigns, they'll say catchwords, little catchphrases, but they don't actually tell you what they're going to do to accomplish the things that they're talking about. Drives me nuts as a campaign, I'm a campaign manager by trade, so I always hate seeing that. You know, you'll see things like, I'm trying to think of an example without targeting anybody, but who's not for safer neighborhoods? Who's not for a better city? I mean, that's obvious. But we don't ever hear what people will actually do. So the policy that I would actually propose would be rolling in animal control into NPD. By doing that, the first people on the scene, assuming that we can get them to have the same response time as all the other police, which I don't see why we couldn't if they were in NPD, would be to have animal control as part of NPD, and they would be the ones to show up first instead of wasting our officers' time to need to be focused on violent crime and not watching a pack of dogs run around. But that goes to an overall point that I'm trying to make. A lot of the issues that we deal with in our city are, it's an enforcement issue and it's a use of resources issue. If we can better use our police force to focus on serious issues instead of having them waste their time on menial things, then I think we can have a much more effective police force.
Let's jump into poverty. You brought it up, one of our key questions here. The city has long had a high poverty rate, and the number is about 39% for children. It also is about four of the population in Memphis lives in poverty. We have generational poverty, and it tends to be the thing that weighs us down in terms of growth, equal some of the growth numbers we see in our neighbor cities and elsewhere. What things would you put forward to try and address that? You brought that, so I'll start with you.
Sure. Again, because we're limited, our hands are tied by the state legislature. They stop us from doing so many different things that we could do to raise real revenue in the city. But what we do have as an option are property taxes, which are already high, and then we have sales taxes, which are regressive, and I'm not a big fan of anyways. So we're so limited on what we can raise, and you know, not everything is solved by spending money, but we could do some things to at least alleviate the poverty issue or the pain of poverty by investing in education. The city currently contributes nothing to our public education system. I think that's a mistake. I think we need to do everything we can for our future. I think we could also do other things to address, basically, I think the current city council has a very huge disconnect with working class and poor citizens. I was the first person in my family to earn a college degree, and I didn't come from poverty by any mile or measure, but I came from a working-class family, and I feel I understand the issues that they deal with a lot better than plenty of other people on city council. And one thing I would like to see happen, and I love that there's talk about it, environmental court judge Patrick Dandridge is currently pushing a landlord registry. I think that is extremely important, because a lot of people in our city are renters. And currently, if you want to get a bad landlord, not all landlords are bad, I know plenty of people who own and rent properties and manage them and do a great job with it, but you have certain landlords who are able to dodge environmental court by putting, instead of their name on the property, they put an LLC. I'm an attorney, so I'm drafting corporation things and operating agreements. They put LLCs on their property so that people don't know how to actually contact the property owner, and the judge of environmental court, the environmental court itself has complained about this, so you can't even get the people in the courtroom. What the landlord registry would do would require them to fill out an application, would require them to list a contact person with a phone number, so that when this kind of issues happen, I mean, you have properties right now, and this is disgusting to me, you have properties where people live in a place that has a problem keeping utilities on, walls falling apart, ceiling's caving in, you've got all kinds of code issues that we already have ordinances on the book to enforce, but in order to enforce them, you have to be able to contact them, you have to be able to serve them so that they come to court and face the problems that they're creating. When you look at the top 10 lists of violators for landlords violating the code, a majority of them are LLCs, and that is how they're dodging it. And by doing this registry as well, we can identify who the bad landlords are, make sure that they're going through the inspection process properly, and make sure that we're actually giving, you know, working class and in a lot of cases, poor people dignity and respect and an ability to live in a good home. So much of poverty and the effect, I mean, poverty, actually, we've had studies that show that poverty affects child brain development. I mean, it really does affect over the long term. And when you look at the history of lead paint and other things that have contributed to crime and poverty, it's terrible. And I think the best way that you help alleviate poverty is by investing in education and giving people the dignity and respect that they deserve in life.
Worth, same question.
I'm glad you brought up the rental property registry. I'm one of the few councilmembers that's been working on it. Been in the meetings with the stakeholders, been meeting with Public Works, Neighborhood Preservation groups, the University of Memphis, and we have to be very careful with this legislation. So we have a lot of people who are, for lack of a better term, good actors in Memphis and bad actors, some who are in the business and do a good job, and they keep good care of their rental properties, and then others that are in it for speculation. And they really don't care what happens to the property, they're looking to see what happens to the larger market, and they don't make investments in Memphis, and they're waiting to see if that property value rises or falls. And they're willing to abandon that property if it doesn't meet what they hope the market will do, and they just write it off. And that's where we have a tough time tracking them down through the courts, through the LLCs. So when we write this, it's going to take a careful mind, it's going to take a very short pencil in terms of legislation to make sure that we capture and make business more difficult in Memphis for the bad actors but not the good actors. You want to catch the coyote in the trap, not the family dog. And I think that goes to a broader point about poverty in Memphis, is that we have to be attracted to business. Part of what creates jobs in Memphis, what creates opportunities in Memphis for people to work and grow in their careers, is economic development, being able to attract new business. Now, new business gets a lot of headlines, and it's fun and it feels good, and there are ribbon cuttings and all of that, but it only accounts for about 5% of job worth in that area. 95% of job worth usually comes from businesses that are already here that are expanding. So it's about creating a friendly atmosphere for them to be able to expand and hire more Memphis. And it's also about creating an environment that's attractive, that we can compete against Mississippi, Arkansas, and other parts of the country, and even internationally in the market that we're in now.
That's a good segue. Tell me what residents of the district say about pilots, tax incentives, and that method of economic development. What do you hear from people who are over the district?
Sure. So I'll jump on that, and so there's been a lot of misinformation, and there's pilots, there's TIPS, and there's TDZs. Those are kind of the three main tax incentives that we use. And as you all have conversations with candidates for council, it's not important that every citizen be able to fully understand and know the ins and outs of each one, and you know, the mechanisms in which they're generating funds and distributing them, but every candidate for council needs to know them intimately. This is a big part of what we do. Pilots, for the most part, are with the Edge Board now, which I sit on, and TIPS and TDZs come through votes of both the city council and the county commission and are critical, absolutely critical for us to be able to compete and recruit. I think there's been some misinformation about them as tax giveaways, especially when it comes to pilots. The most accurate term is a more boring term, which is probably why I didn't get out there, but it's more of a future tax increase abatement. There's nothing lost by giving a pilot. As long as we hold true to the but-for principle, and I think that's absolutely critical when we talk about economic incentives. If this incentive, in other words, we wouldn't have gotten this investment, or we wouldn't have gotten to this level, we wouldn't have gotten this many jobs but for the tax incentive that we're able to give. And if we stay true to the but-for principle on pilots, on TIPS, on TDZs, I think it's an absolute win-win for everybody.
Do people in the district belong to the pilot program and continue as is, or do they want to see some modification?
I think everybody wants to tweak it a little bit, including not just the people, but also the politicians, and everyone involved's got an opinion, but I don't know if there's a majority opinion about how to change it, or how to tweak it in which direction. I'd like to see it more competitive and have us place less hurdles in the way, and make it a quicker, simpler system for businesses to know exactly what they're getting, so they can quickly and efficiently make a decision rather than having to do three months of due diligence where other communities aren't requiring nearly as many stringent hurdles get through.
Let's pause and give John a chance to answer the same question. Did you get to repeat it?
No, I remember the question. The main thing I have to add to all that, and maybe distinguish a small difference, I do hear a lot of negativity coming from the district, at least the parts of the district I speak to, about against pilots. That being said, I don't think that pilots as a whole are bad. I think that when we give pilots to companies that have been here for a very long time, that is bad. And it's really, it's odd to me, because I mean, the whole idea of a pilot is to attract new business to Memphis, and again, that's another thing that I don't think anybody for the most part will be against. But I've seen these kind of tax incentives be given to companies and other entities that have been here for a very long time, and I mean, at the end of the day, again, if it's attracting new business, I'm okay with it, but if we're just giving corporate welfare out to companies that have been in town and around for a very long time, then I think that's a waste of taxpayer dollars, and I think we could better use it somewhere else.
A follow-up on, this concerns the tax base, and it has to do with, you know, the complement of police officers. Memphis is at, what, 1,900 shooting for 2,300, 2,400. Why is it so difficult to wrap that police force up? Is it a pay issue? There just isn't enough money in the city budget to go out and fund 400 police officers?
Can I take that one first? First of all, Memphis is in a 324-square-mile area. That might have changed with some de-annexations, so feel free to correct me on that. But because it's such a large area, it costs a lot more to pay for those services. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was Baltimore, Detroit, maybe even Atlanta that can fit within the city limits of Memphis. We cover a very large area. So therefore, we need more officers than most cities need, you know, officers per square mile. That being said, the reason I think it's been so hard for us to retain officers, because again, we used to have more officers than we have now. And when we, when the city council, I should say, not the current council, but the council before, voted to cut pensions and benefits for our first responders, they opened up a floodgate for officers to go to other cities. I remember Dallas and plenty of other cities coming to Memphis to recruit officers successfully away from our city. Memphis, you know, we deal with a lot of issues with our poverty and crime, and officers can go and work somewhere where that same situation doesn't exist to the same extent, make a better pay, get better benefits. I mean, we have to look at, I mean, I know this is a public entity, but we have to look at it from a competitive standpoint. We have to realize that we're not the only city around, and that we're competing for these officers across the country. And that's why I'm a strong believer, I want to return the benefits that were cut. I realize that that does put a financial burden on the city, but I hope we get to it later. I have some suggestions, and I'm not the only one who supports these suggestions that I'll go into, but to cut and save money so that we can afford, to make sure that we're paying our officers the benefits and the other things they deserve. And again, I understand both sides of this issue very well, but when you give an officer or any worker in Memphis, one thing that's left out of the conversation far too often is it wasn't just first responders that had their benefits and their pay cut, it was workers across the city. And we have to keep in mind that when you make a promise, when you give somebody a contract or benefit package, and you say, this is what you're going to make every year, that's what they base their financial planning on. And again, most of these people are working-class folks, not rich people, so they are doing their month-to-month financial planning based on what they were promised. And when we rip that away, I mean, I get doing it for new hires maybe, but doing it for people that have been depending on that and basing their livelihoods on it, I think it was a terrible decision. And I openly ran to return it last time, and I'm openly running to return those benefits this time. I hope that we can, because I think that is, I mean, obviously, when you're competing with other cities for officers, we need to be able to give them the proper pay to attract and build our ranks up. The reason we struggle to have this many officers is because there's so many other places they can go and get a better deal. So hopefully, we can do that, and I feel like I have one more thing to say on that. I can't think of it right now, so I'll stop there.
Yeah, and there's several other factors. I think the national conversation over the last five years has shifted in terms of policing in America and what that means, and it's been more difficult to recruit nationwide. We hear of other departments that are struggling with it. I don't think our pay, our salaries are as competitive as they should be with local municipalities. Just even with the talent pool that we have here in the area, Memphis Police Department needs to be the place to work if you want to be a police officer in the mid-south. And I think we should also open up our recruitment right now that is exclusive to only people that live within Shelby County. I think that's kind of an arbitrary border. I don't think, when someone calls 911, an officer shows up to the scene, shows up to their home, they're not really concerned whether that person lives in Fayette or South Haven or West Memphis or Collierville or downtown, whatever it might be. They want a good service from that officer. So I think that, all those things will help with recruitment. There are 11 city council members that are running for city positions right now. Of those 11, I'm the only one that's been endorsed by the police and fire associations. And it's not because I always agree with them. I think we, there's certainly been times where I've disagreed with them, and we've had that discussion publicly, but there's a mutual respect for the job they do and for the job I do. We've been able to work together closely, even in moments where we disagreed, and I'm looking forward to continuing that with them. The most important thing, I think, we've pulled on a lot of leverage trying to increase recruitment, as well as marketing, and we've hired more officers in the last two years than the previous five years combined. And a lot of that was bad budgeting, and this is why budget and these decisions matter at council, you need somebody that can think through unintended consequences. In fiscal years 2012, 13, and 14, we hired nearly zero officers. It lagged from the financial crisis, that we had a lot of tight budgets, and one of the things they cut was $5 million from recruitment. And they stopped graduating police officers at the same time, they did the benefits cut, and so we saw attrition numbers go up, and our recruitment numbers were still at zero. And we're not at 1,900 anymore. As a few weeks ago, we got to 2,062. So we're certainly on the way back up, and we're hoping to be at 2,300 as quickly as possible.
Can I respond to that?
Well, this isn't a debate, so let me ask you another question, if you want to find a way to bring up something, you can.
Sure.
So it's a relevant question, because you brought up the issue of paying for, or the issue of restoring benefits that were taken away from officers. How would you pay for that?
Again, the way that we pay for it is we have to find ways to save money. Unfortunately, the state legislature ties our hands and does not, they don't allow us to create new revenue streams for the most part. We've seen a few exceptions to that. But the two major things I think we could do that would save the city enough money to not only contribute to education, but also to improve MATA and do plenty of other things that I would like to do as a councilman. First, I think we need to consolidate city and county government. I think it was a mistake that we have not re-approached that issue. I think dual government, having both a county government and a city government in the same place, is not only wasteful, but I think it too often reminds us the tale of two cities type scenario that exists in this community. I don't think we need to have two governments in one. I think Nashville, not only have they had a landlord registry that we spoke about earlier for 11 years, but they've also had a metro government for a long time. It saves money, it makes sense. The issue that kept it from passing last time, I believe, in my opinion at least, is the school issue. Schools have been consolidated now, so I think it's something that we need to put back on the ballot, and I think it's something that regardless of ideology, I think people would come out and support. The only thing I would be interested to see is the, there was a lawsuit dealing with whether the county had to have a majority vote or not on the issue, but that's something that would have to be revisited. The other thing that I think we should do to save money, and I think this is an issue that me and my opponent actually disagree on, is I think we need to get away from TVA. I think TVA not only almost ruined our water supply when they tried to drill a hole in it to cool their plants instead of buying recycled water from MLGW like they should have. Thank goodness Sierra Club, which endorses me, as well as AFL-CIO, which represents 40 labor unions in the city. I'm the pro-labor candidate. But luckily, Sierra Club stopped TVA from doing that, but not only would, getting away from TVA, that's not the only reason. If that were the only reason, that probably wouldn't be good enough. But the main reason is that the figures, they've recently found out that the $300 to $400 million, they believe we could save the city by getting away from TVA and getting our power across the river, those figures were not accurate estimates. They did it, the estimates were based off of conservative and pessimistic views on what the, basically, the decrease in the price of renewable energy would be. Now, we know that solar and wind have become much more affordable than the estimates of $300, $400 million had anticipated. So while they haven't given an exact estimate of what that would be now, it would be over $300 to $400 millions in savings, and that, I mean, that should be a no-brainer.
Did you want to respond to my question?
Yes, your question, and I think some of the things that were stated in John's response, because there were a number of things that were completely impossible or untruthful. And one of them is that if we have savings in MLGW that can be spent in the Memphis General Fund, those are two completely different entities. Any savings from MLGW stay in the divisions of light, gas, and water, and those are three separate entities that have to be divided out as well. There's no mixing and matching of funds. If there's any savings found in MLGW, it is separate from the city general fund and any spending we do are there. There's no way to cross those streams. So I think it's either completely disingenuous to say, you know, that's where we can start paying for education, that's where we can start paying for busing, that's where we can start paying for all these other ventures that we want to spend on in the city. It's either disingenuous or it's unbelievably uninformed. I mean, this is kind of city government 101. So I think that's a very, very important thing to clear up for everybody that's watching and making sure that that part of the argument doesn't enter into the public debate and muddy the waters.
I'm going to break with my own rule while you respond.
Yeah, thank you. First of all, I gave more than just one answer. I also talked about consolidated government, which would create lots of savings and I could have stopped there with the savings that would create and allow us to spend money. I also talked earlier about the fact that we could streamline resources that we're already using with my example of the officers. But no, with the MLGW thing, just to correct my opponent here, basically, when you save money at MLGW, that means they can save ratepayers money. If we're saving ratepayer, if we're saving the average citizen money on their utility bill, that's more money that can be spent on property and sales taxes. I mean, there's, and again, I wish that the state legislature didn't tie our hands on the so many different ways of raising revenue that we could, but they do. And so therefore, we need to try to save our taxpayers as much money as they can because the more we do in this city, the more we spend. I mean, I know a lot of people that are in support of the Memphis 3.0 plan, I know a lot of people that are in support of a lot of things that are coming out right now and those things do cost money. We're going to have to raise the money somehow. Guess where it's going to come from? It's going to come from raised taxes and cutting in places that need to be cut. That's what it's going to come down to. So the least we could do is save our MLGW customers in our city money on the utilities that they pay. And $300 to $400 million is nothing, and it's actually more than that, is nothing to blink at. TVA, I believe it's a small percentage of the power that they use is actually renewable energy. We could get a much better deal across the river and we can save taxpayers money and